Now we have a special session, so I now request to take their seats. So may I call upon Mr. Jayya Vibhava Swami. Mr. Jayya Vibhava Swami is the Managing Director of CSE Mysore. He is also serving as Secretary for Sri Malai Mahadeshwari Swamay Khetra Development Authority. Prior to joining CSE, he served various leadership positions to Zillapanchayar, Ramanagara District, Karnataka State, Khadi and Village Industries Board, KIGD, Warehousing Corporation, Vidhana Souda, Department of the Empowerment for Differently Aabled and Senior Citizens. We welcome you sir. The next speaker for today is Mr. Rajesh Bansal. Mr. Rajesh Bansal is a former CEO of BSCS Rajani Power Limited. He has done his engineering graduation in the year 1985. He started his career as scientist at ISRO Satellite Center Bangalore. He has total thirty-seven years of experience. He has ten years of diverse experience in meter designing and manufacturing. Further, he has worked for eighteen years in power distribution. He was the CEO of India's biggest power distribution company, BSCS Rajani Power Limited. We welcome you sir. The next speaker is Mr. Regis. Mr. Regis has twenty years of experience in energy utilities in the EDF Group, telecommunication project leader, TSOs and DSOs experience, smart grids and EV project manager. His previous job was territorial director where he was simultaneously responsible for grid operation and NDS strategy deployment with elected representatives, mayors and deputies. Currently, Regis is the Head of Department Innovation and Development, E-Mobility Program, NDS based in Paris. And the final speaker for today is Mr. Uday Putam Baker. Mr. Uday is currently Deputy Director and Head of Mechanical and Insulating Material Division and Electrical Resource and Development Association, Vadodara, Gujarat. He has a doctorate in Metallurgical and Materials Engineering from MS University of Baroda, Gujarat. He has an experience of more than twenty-two years and his expertise include evaluation and transmission distribution components, evaluation of solid and liquid inserting materials, material characterization and identification, root cause analysis in failure of engineering component and system, condition monitoring and health assessment as well as remaining life site assessment of power and process plant. We welcome you sir. Now I call upon Co-Chair of WUS, Mr. Sudhir Agarwal to take care of the session.
Good afternoon everyone. I welcome you all towards sustainable transformation of utilities. That's a basic theme of the World Utilities Summit which is the fourth edition. So not wasting much time, may I request Mr. Jayya Vibhava Swami, MD CSE Mysore to please start.
Thank you. Dignities on the dash and off the dash. Let's first understand that the sustainable practices by the utilities also in achieving the net zero is a very important thing. It's something like achieving the balance between the amount of emissions produced and those removed from the atmosphere in order to reduce the global warming. That is the basic essence of this subject. As we all know, the global target to achieve the net zero is targeted as by 2050, we must achieve net zero. But India has put its own target that it could, it may not be possible by 2050 and in its reality, we may try to achieve by 2070 as declared by Government of India. And what should be our goal or targets in achieving this net zero by 2070 is a matter of subject for discussion today. We need to produce about five hundred gigawatts of non-fossil electricity by then. And I mean to say as the early in earlier session, you might have seen that the demand by the next fifty years from now, it's going to be three to four times more than what demand for the power or energy is there today. So in that, see what we can plan to do is to get half of the energy from the renewables by 2030. And there is a challenge also that renewable energy, we can't do it for more than fifty or fifty-five percent. There could be a problem of harmonics and also the blending. So at least fifty percent we can target it and try to achieve by 2030. So by this reduction of emission of one billion tons by 2030, not only by increasing the capacity of renewables, but also by looking at various other methods of generation by non-fossils by 2030. And also reduction in emission intensity of the GDP by forty-five percent by 2030. If we do this or target to do this, we can then further plan to achieve the net zero by 2070. If we take with special reference to the state of Karnataka, as I'm coming from the state of Karnataka, the distribution discoms and also the private operators in Karnataka took this as a challenge to achieve the renewable energy target much more than the other conventional source of energies. In India, right now, the total contribution of renewable energy to the power sector is twenty-seven percent. But whereas the state of Karnataka with a target which was given to be achieved by 2030, does achieved in 2020. Right now, the renewable energy contributes to fifty percent of the total energy produced in the state of Karnataka. And if you look at the installed capacity, fifty percent is by renewable energy, that is one six zero double one megawatt and rest all like micro major hydro, CGHS, CGS, thermal, captive and IPPs contribute to another thousand six hundred megawatts, eleven sixteen thousand megawatts. In the Karnataka's position in the, why I am telling about the state of Karnataka is that other states if they wish they can follow by 2030 to achieve this. And this could be one of the best proposition in reducing the carbon and achieving the net zero in the shortest period. So top five RE states in the state, in the country are Rajasthan, Gujarat, Tamil Nadu, Karnataka and Maharashtra. Looking at the geogrical, geographical, geographical area of each of the states, the Karnataka is smaller than Rajasthan, Gujarat and Tamil Nadu. But of course, we have achieved almost near to Gujarat and Tamil Nadu and we may surpass these two states in a year from now and we may go up to twenty gigawatts. And the top five solar states, that is what I said about the renewable energy, top five solar, in top five solar states, we stand at third and also in the wind, we stand in the third. And we have a renewable energy policy for the state of Karnataka, that is 2022 to 27. It was announced last year in the April and we are planning to add new ten gigawatt of renewable energy power including one gigawatt from the rooftop solar. We have taken it as a challenge to introduce rooftop solar and promote that rooftop solar in all the residences across our state with a subsidy scheme announced by Government of India. And we are going to attract private sector investment for a, for green energy corridor. That's a must. We must allow the private sector in investment for the green energy corridor. The very important thing is that whoever comes forward to do the project of RE energy or any power projects in the state of Karnataka, there need not be a conversion of land which is required. It is going to be simplified and it will be a deemed conversion for all purposes, for the purpose of generation of energy. So more and more people or the stakeholders can come, invest in our state for the purpose of this RE power generation, which indirectly contributes to the net zero concept. And then promotion of off-grid solar project for captive use. More and more promotion we must do for the off-grid solar projects. I mean to say it's not going to be connected to the grid, it's not going to cause a harmonic, harmonic distortion, it's going to be used, where it is going to be produced. So it's definitely going to help for the net zero. That I mean to promotion of new RE technology including energy storage. I mean to say, we must understand that the RE power is only during daytime and it also has got some weather adversities. It may not generate as what it is expected if there is a bad weather, that we all know. And it is a must-run status. Everybody says that by increasing the RE power, we will be able to achieve the demand of the power. But then it's a great challenge that during the adversities and during the weather when it is bad and also it's a must-run status. I mean to say, in, we must use it, otherwise we must do the banking by battery banking and other facilities by which the power becomes costlier. It's a, one of the impediment in the RE project also as we all must try to understand. And if you look at the sector wise emission, carbon emission, electricity sector, that is forty-four percent of the carbon emission is in the electricity sector. Manufacturing eighteen percent, transport thirteen percent. We all see pollution by transport, 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 but it amounts to thirteen percent. And then industrial process and product is eight percent, other waste three percent and agriculture, you look at it, the agriculture, by agriculture, burning the waste and other things, it is producing fourteen percent. So we can definitely contribute something for reducing this. Electricity has what I told you, electricity, that is what I have already told you. And what are the challenges? See now challenges, I keep it open to the entire audience over here. How do we need to handle unpredictable renewable source of electricity generation? It is generated but you are not able to use or it is not generated and there is a demand. So you can't do away, right now in India, the coal and other conventional energy completely in order to achieve net zero, you cannot do away with it. The senior official from NTPC was telling the same thing, that blend of the power as of now, that we need to keep the coal and other thermal projects also till we find out some other, in, by doing some innovations, we must find out how do we manage. The only way to manage this and mitigate this would be of the banking of the RE power, provided that works out cheaper and that's a challenge. So need to handle unpredictable load due to EV charging. I mean to say in the next ten to fifteen years, there is going to be a huge demand for the electricity, that's one. Second thing, one gentleman was explaining yesterday stating that as far as possible, try to charge your vehicle in the daytime. I mean to say when there is abundant of solar power, you can charge volkay. So you need to understand the peak load management when RE is not available. So when RE is not available, how do we manage the peak load? That's also a great challenge. And consume excess energy generated by net zero consumers. Environmental friendly disposal of storage batteries, if very high capacity battery storage are planned, I mean to say banking is planned, what is going to be, how are we going to dispose these batteries which are going to be in a very large quantity? It's not going to be small for a banking of the solar or any other energy for that matter. So this sector need to have some share of conventional energy sources till something is found out, how do we mitigate the issue of the solar power which we are not able to utilize fully or when there is under generation of the solar power due to power adversi, I mean adversities. So that of course, by look, saying all these things, now I leave it to the audience to come up and say, what really are the challenges, how to mitigate this, how to overcome this? I've said how do I, how do I, how do, how are we doing try to, to achieve the net zero? But then how should we do next? It is a million dollar question. Thank you.
Thank you sir. Now may I request Mr. Rajesh Bansal, former CEO, BSCS Rajani Power Limited to please save you.
Good afternoon, I am Rajesh Bansal. I was CEO with BSCS Rajani Power Limited, which is a distribution company in capital city of Delhi, serving to almost four point eight million consumers. So as we know, the basic theme of this World Utilities Summit is about the transformation towards net zero, transformation towards green energy. And in this journey of transformation, I will represent something from the power distribution side. Of course, all of us want this transformation, all of us want net zero, carbon, we all of are suffering because of the greenhouse effects and definitely we have planned, we have set our targets. But the most important thing is if we plan for this, if we plan for this journey and if it affects the operation, the efficiency, the reliability of the distribution company, then definitely we will not able to sustain it. So the key is how the distribution, what the distribution company should do to sustain it, here is some of my views. So we are talking about the power sector is transforming, we are talking about renewable energy. Speaker just before me, they have talked about the unpredictability related to the renewable energy, the unpredictability related to the electrical vehicles, the consumer behaviors are changing. If we just see, if we compare just back three years back, most of the, most of us or rather most of the manpower or most of the employees, they were working from the office, but now the work from home has become common so that there is a big change in the human behavior and because of the behavior, the consumption pattern, the load patterns are changing. And all these transformations, they are affecting the utility operations. As we know, there is a higher degree of unpredictability both at generation side and at the consumption side. Now before I go ahead, what exactly is the power distribution business? Now everybody can have their own definition, but I as a person who has spent almost nineteen years in power distribution, I define power distribution business is to meet each consumer power demand with efficiency and reliability. So as a CEO of a power distribution company, my aim was to meet each consumer power demand with efficiency and reliability. The key word is each, not all. There is a big difference between all consumer and each consumer. All means you have arranged the thing, you can say I have arranged the food. If there are two hundred people, you arrange the two hundred packet, you can say you have arranged the food. But each means they should definitely receive and it will be, it can be eat by them, it can be taken by them. That means as per the requirement of consumer. So arranging is so far is from the generation side, from the transmission side, but we are the one who ensure that it reach to the doorstep of the consumer. So that definition for the distribution business is each consumer should reach. Now just by generation, we have spent almost five sessions on generation only, but the key is if the distribution company, if it affects reliability or efficiency of the distribution company, it will be very difficult to reach that. And what is happening is there is a higher sense of unpredictability, scheduling become is, is a big task, is, is becoming very, very difficult because of generation, because of load, the demand curves are becoming totally non-uniforms. If we compare in Delhi, the demand, the peak demand during the summer versus the peak demand during the winter, it is one is to five. What I mean to say, in Delhi, if the peak demand is almost eight thousand in summer, the winter demand, the peak demand in winter is not even sixteen hundred. Now that's a big variation. So most of the asset, they remain idle in most of the months and suddenly you need asset only for few hours in a year, few hours in a year. So whatever investment you make, whatever space you need, whatever infrastructure you create is used only for few hours. Now these are the challenges which are growing. So far the challenge was only kilowatt, now the challenge is apart from the kilowatt, even the location has become unpredictable, we don't know where the vehicle will charge and who will charge, at what time he will charge. So sense of unpredictabilities are increasing, which is causing power crisis, network utilization impact, safety impact, power quality impact and asset failures. So these are the issues. But, but most important thing is transformation are inevitable, we have no option. We utility cannot say these are the difficulties, these are the difficulty, these are the difficulty. We have to go for solution, we have to find the solution. And of course, the solution we are looking for is from the smart grids, from the batteries, from the smart metering or is there something else where we can get the solution? So this presentation is about that. So when we talk about smart metering or the smart grid, so we have lot of data, we are generating data from grid, we are generating data from meters, we have battery storages, we have data which are online communicated, we have data processing capabilities, we have newer sensors and we have analytics. But again, the key question is, are these processes, what we are doing, money we are spending, whether it is AMISB, RDSS, UDA, whatever schemes we are having in India and world over, people are investing on smart metering, are these investment, these technology addressing the final objective? Are these addressing the final objective or they are just the infrastructure? So the most important thing is, are they really addressing the ultimate objective of the distribution companies? Say in India, most of the times you ask the people, why are you installing smart meter, sub-meter reading, loss reduction, prepayment, are these the objectives? Are these are the issues? Are these are the key challenge we are going to face after ten years? Or the issues are fast response, issues are we need the flexible network where we can change the configuration of the network on the demand? I feel we distribution company, our role is like a traffic police. On the one side is the generation, on the other side is the consumer and our wires are like road and the electrons are like car and the vehicles which are flowing on the wire, so they are flowing on the road. And we are like traffic police managing the traffic on the road. We have to ensure each and every road is balanced, we have to ensure if there is a jam on any road, we should divert the load on the other side and that really need a dynamism, that really need a smartness, that really need a automization, that really needs, you have to have smart apps and analytical ability which can help you. It is something like Google map. Google map does not tell you the map, Google does not tell you the analytics report, Google does not tell you about the big charts, bar chart, pie chart, it tell you, these are the three options, you will take thirty-three minutes by this, this is the red page where you will find traffic and so on. I am traveling from my home to office from last seven years, same home, same office. My driver knows each and every pit hole, every and everything, but still you open the map, why? Because it guides you for the present, it tells you how to manage the present crisis and that's what we need and that is the most important thing is. So the key issue is the money we are investing, so-called smart metering, smart grid, sensors, data, analytics, AI, ML, I am not a IT person, all sort of terms, but are we really addressing the final objective? That is the most important thing and utility object as I said, even safety is the biggest objective. Are we really addressing that? Because for a distribution company, for a consumer, whether the power is from the renewable, from biomass, from hydro, it is just flow of electron, they are not worried about that. But we have to see whatever are the unpredictability, whether it is because of any reason, how we will ensure that none of the things, the failure of assets, the technical losses, the cost of, the price of the power and other thing, they should not get affected and this is the thing. So the key question is, is it in the pleasant form, are we able to address the objectives? If not, why? Are we addressing all the objectives? If not, why? Whether the AI, ML based data analytics will able to achieve the objective, that's what we are claiming. Are we leveraging full benefit on the investment? What else to be done? As per me, the answer is smart apps. Today we use the mobile phone not because it is a smartphone. Imagine a phone without a app, will you use it? So why we are using meter without apps? It's the same thing. Smart meter has no significance without apps. So same should be the, the meter. So what we need is the smart apps. The smart apps are basically, these are the objective oriented solutions, simple solutions which sees what is the ultimate purpose. The purpose is not to generate the data, the purpose is not to communicate the data, the purpose is not to store the data, the purpose is not the process of data. Let me tell you, all these four activity, generation, process, communication and storage is a cost, no gain. The gain is only the app and you can get the gain only from the app. And apps enhance the capability alone and basically it allows you to leverage the maximum benefits from the capabilities. It is like you know, if we give a laptop to a person, does not mean he will become an engineer. So you have to have some system to take benefit out of it. Unless until we develop a system, how to take benefit out, please remember, it is different from the analytics. Google map is not analytics, the background of that might be analytics, it is slightly different, it is the user friendly thing, it is the one. Who is the user? The users are not the VCOs or who are, the user are the lineman, the user is the consumer, the user is the field engineer. What we are giving to them, that is the most important thing is, and as I said, smart apps are like, we have given example of phone. So we have to move from functionality, you will get the data, you will get online data, you will have so much data. We have to go out from the functionality and go to the objective side, the ultimate benefit side, that should be the aim. We should not judge the performance by the functionality, what he is giving, we should see what benefits we are getting. And in future, the utility performance will depend upon his readiness for the smart apps and so with the mender, whether the meter company, whether the solution company, whether the service provider, whether the system integrator, how much better benefits they are giving, not the functionality they are giving. There is a big difference between functionality and benefit. Whether you get the benefit or not, I don't know. No, it will not work, you have to have, I need this benefit. So if I further explain, the smart meter is there, logics are there, analytics, but the need is the app and apps are objective oriented, they convert capabilities into solution. Smartphone is a tool, smart meter is a tool, they are not the solution. We need solution, not the tool alone. So we need the apps which convert the capabilities, which convert the tool into a solution. They are precise information, they have enhanced benefit, they are action oriented, they are user oriented, specific purpose, endless possibilities. I feel, in fact I have prepared a list, we should have, we need at least more than hundred and fifty smart apps to take benefit of the, the investment we are doing in the smart grid and the smart metering and that is most important thing. And let me tell you, in BSCS Delhi, which was rated as only A plus company in India as far as the distribution company, operation performance is concerned, today also we have so many apps although we have not hundred percent smart metering because app, the smart app does not mean that you have to have first smart meter then only you can have. Even you have a lot of data from the SCADA, you have lot of data from GIS, you have lot of consumer data, you have lot of data from your distribution transformer, you have lot of data from your feeder, you can have N number of apps, it's not. Okay, smart meter will give you further data and you can have more number of apps. So you need apps and today our losses are less than seven percent, outage is less than four hours in a year and the cost is the lowest in the northern tariff, last eight year no increase in the tariff and still we are making profit. So this are possible only because of smart apps. So some all example, I remember during the COVID, we used to get a call that there is a outage and our So, small example, I remember during the COVID, we used to get a call that there is an outage and our person used to go. Now, the problem is, the outage, you, he has to go to the panel, the consumer panel. And when he goes to the consumer panel, consumer has a hesitation because it was COVID time, he doesn't want outsider to come inside. Our person has a hesitation, there might be a COVID patient inside. And the worst part is when he go inside and he find the MCV strip. So, we developed a small app that whenever MCV strip, you get a message, your MCV strip, the outage is because of MCV strip. Now, imagine this small app, the delight of the consumer. Earlier, he was in the dark for half an hour till the person visit. Now, these are the small apps which are needed, which were function oriented, objective oriented. Smart meters can do lot of things, it can prevent even a fire, it can prevent this thing. We have to look for apps. These are few examples, of course, you can have many more examples. So, as I said, smart apps basically required IoT knowledge, analytics knowledge. It will bring desired smartness, raise alarm and alerts, detect causes, suggest and empower for actions and directly to the end user. This is what I say, apps and which are the need for the hours. My last slide, how to develop the app and how to get the app? The first and foremost thing is, first plan the need. What we are doing is, first we are bringing the technology and then looking for how to take the benefit. It should be other way. First define what you want. I want to do this, 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 I have shown the objective triangle, the spin point, okay, I need to do this, 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 this thing. Now, to meet that need, what exactly you want, what resources you want, what features you want. You are buying a meter means you have a marriage for ten years. After that, you cannot replace the meter. Tomorrow, you should not have a regret that I don't have this feature, I don't have that feature. Because you might be needing some features to address a particular objective, to address a particular issue or to address a particular expectation. So, define your objective, define your need, short term, long term, medium term, need. Make out the plan, what resources you need, what data you need, what features you need, what communication. Lot of people say, okay, we have checked the smart meter, we can give a command, disconnect, it get disconnected and they will exhibit, okay, we have given a command to thousand meter disconnect and see all the thousand disconnected. Okay, clapping, yes, it is working. Then, how much time it has taken? Sir, we have plotted it, it is taking from one second to ten minutes. Okay, clapping within the SLA. And then, what you will use? Sir, if there is a fire, I will give a command and the meter will switch off after ten minutes? See, and I've, I've, everything is working. Meter is obeying the command, it is disconnecting, the data is communicating, but you have not checked, the ten minutes is not a requirement for fire. It may be good for the prepaid or postpaid activity. You might be disconnecting because of the non-payment, then ten minute even, you disconnect after one hour, it hardly matter. So, you have to define this connection within this timeframe because this is my objective. It cannot be one second for every case, it cannot be one hour for every case. So, you have to be very, very particular, you have to define it very, very precisely. Same functionality, but you have to define it. And last and most important is the validation. Even if you have the best recipes, you have the best vegetables, you have the best spices, you are cannot guarantee that dish will be best. All of us knows, you have the best CT, best PT, most accurate CT, most accurate PT, most accurate meter. But if the connecting wire is not proper, it will not perform. So, when the syst, the, even if you have the best components, it is does not guarantee that your integrated system will be accurate. So, you have to do validation and validation does not means that just having the BIS certificate, IEC certificate that gives you guarantee, no. Validation is totally different, you have to simulate the field condition right at the project level, travel level so that you does not have any regret on a later date, that after three years, after five years, you find some bugs, some functionality you are not able to meet, some of the targets you are not able to address. And especially, this is very important in India where we have the Totex model, where you get the payment of your investment against the monthly performance. Imagine after five years, suddenly you find that you are not able to perform and you are not getting the payment. You will be doomed, you will be out of business. I have spent eighteen years in the industry in manufacturing side, so I understand manufacturing also very well. So, this is all from my side and definitely validation gives lot of things. So, smart apps developed on smart metering, infrastructure and data analytics power is the need. India can be a utility smart app hub and solution provider to the world. Thank you, this is all from my side.
Thank you, sir, thank you very much. I think you rightly said, we should have safe, secured measurement and the response time should be the real aspect of it. Thank you, sir. Now, may I call upon Mr. Regis Lee Dres, Managing Director, Think Smart Grid France. Welcome.
Hello. So, I'm Regis Adrezen, Managing Director of Think Smart Grid. Before presenting very briefly my association and concrete use cases to reach net zero emission till twenty fifty, let me thank the organizers for the invitation and this opportunity to present the Smart Grid ecosystem in, in France. My presentation is a perfect addition, perfect addition to the previous one. Smart Grids will be key to reach net zero emission and I'm going to describe few concrete use cases that we have already deployed in France. But because we are not an Indian ecosystem, a few words about my association. So, we are a French association representing the entire Smart Grid ecosystem at the national level. As you can see on this slide, we are, who are our members? We have utilities, TSO, the main DSO, university, IT, startups, equipment manufacturers and the French national regulator and also the Ministry of Ecological Transition. We have some partnerships in Africa, Asia, in Asia, in Singapore, in Indonesia, Europe and would be pleased to collaborate with other ecosystems Indian, of course, our association. Last but not least, our chairwoman is Marianne Lignot, also CEO of NEDIS. NEDIS is a major DISCOM in France with more than thirty-five million consumers. Our main objective is how to develop smart with sector in France and to foster cooperation with other smart with ecosystem and develop international collaboration. As you can see, smart with solutions of our members are deployed all over the value chain of the electrical system from generation to consumption. So, now, all over the world, in order to succeed in decarbonizing our economies, we need to electrify processes, particularly in the automotive sector, but buildings and industry too, and to have more renewable energy. In parallel, DISCOM and TSO will have to deploy smart grid solutions, providing more flexibility to the power system and exchanging more data to develop new use cases. Now, let me present some concrete example. Priority measures to decarbonize our energy system, of course, to decarbonize buildings, we need to deploy heat pumps, we need to electrify thermal processes and we need to develop charging control of electric vehicles, I will describe more deeply. But we need to deploy digital tools to modulate in real time the production and consumption and have a specific attention to the standardization and interoperability. Now, the first concrete example that we have already deployed in France is from EVs. So, how can we acci, no, uh energy renewable, sorry. How can we accelerate the deployment of renewable energy? We have developed different solutions to connect more renewable energy to the grid and at a lower cost, using sensors, algorithm, IT and forecasting solutions with a fast return on investment. Another topic is thanks to digital substation, producers can take part in the voltage regulation. And finally, collective self-consumption can be maximized by matching local consumption with the local green energy generation. The second use case that we have already deployed in France is for EV. The deployment of EVs is a real game changer for the management of the grid. With smart charging, it's possible to urge EV owners to charge their vehicles outside peak hours with a price signal, thus avoiding to create constraints on the grid. With a simple management based on peak and off-peak tariffs, the consumer will make significant savings. It's a figure on the center of the page. On right, at that, controlling the power of the charge by modulating it according to the total power required by the house or the building allows even more savings. For the last figure, I have last slide regarding on EVs. Combining smart charging on solar generation, on solar or wind generation. It will reduce local peaks in demand. It will reduce the backflow of local production onto the power transmission network and reduce again the electricity bill of the end consumers. Digital tools have been developed for this purpose. My last use case, very briefly, thanks to the smart meter infrastructure. Flexibility is increasing. It's very easy to understand that all the data you visualize and measure unable to reduce consumption and use flexibility and the associated control. And finally, a few examples of networks digitalization deployed by our members. Automation to improve quality and optimize load flow. Smart meters to improve customers' life. So, thank you for your attention.
Thank you, thank you very much. May I request Mr. Uday Ponantham Baker, Deputy Director, ERDA, please?
Good afternoon. The presentation is on test facilities for emerging technologies. I am talking about the technologies which we are dealing with in ERDA and the test facilities for those. It is just a brief overview of our organization. It is about fifty, we are entering into the fiftieth year of the, after, of the foundation and it is spread over about twenty-five acre in Vodhara, in Gujarat district, Gujarat state of Gujarat. And we have about ten thousand consumer base and we are testing about more than, more than fifty thousand samples per year and evaluation of about one fifty electrical products. We have been accredited by the national as well as several international accreditation agencies. Just a overview of our activities, we have in-house testing facilities to our electrical, almost all electrical products. Then we have onsite testing, we have field services for the power plants, substations and TND lines. Then the expert services like the diagnostic testing, root cause analysis of the faults and then analytical studies. We have RND division specially for the electrical sector where we undertake the in-house RND to support the industries to find out the solutions and this is our own sponsored, we do it for our own interest, own curiosity. Then the, there are sponsored projects we undertake from the government and other agency which are, the outcomes are in the open domains and we publish papers. Then we undertake the contract research to support the industries to have their RND done at the, at the other agencies, but keeping it everything confidential. Then, now about the emerging technologies, every techno, every, every sector, every field, every product, the technology is emerging and the rate of the emerging, the technologies is very high. So, we will not go into, I will not go into all the technologies, but the things which I feel which are more relevant for the audience here and which is of again used to the, our customers. So, the solar PV panel is the first, I have three, four technologies I am discussing. Solar PV panels and the power plants. And we, if you consider the PV panel testing at the lab, it can be divided as per the international standards. There are five types, the general inspection, then the mechanical strength, environmental endurance, then electrical shock hazard and fire hazard. So, these are all the aspects which have to be considered for the sonar PV panel when we are using. So, we can say there are about thirty-one tests which are covered in these categories and all tests are not required for the each panel, but there has to be a type test or design test which is required for, to be done for the one panel of the design. And then we have the facilities for the, we will discuss about the onsite testing of the solar power plant, condition assessment and diagnostics. Now, this is the most commonly used solar testing, panel testing facility. And this is a solar sim simulator and we can simulate the solar radiance and we can find out how the solar panel performs, what are the outputs, particularly IV characteristics of the solar panel and find out what will be the MPP maximum power point. So, this is the most of the most common or test mostly utilize or consider for the acceptance of the solar panel. Then, other than that, there are certain tests which are done to check the mechanical strength of the panels. These are the robustness of the terminations, then mechanical load tester, then health tester. It is the impact of the ice balls in the cold regions. Then the module bracket tester, so if something hits, how it will behave or whether it will withstand or not. So, these are some of the tests for the mechanical. For, we know solar panels are subjected to environmental and this is the most debated issue that how the solar panels will perform or what will be the life? So that we can simulate in the climatic and humidity chambers and we can find out in the thermal cycling, after thermal cycling, what is the performance, what is the efficiency of the panels. Similarly, we can have the UV preconditioning, that means we can generate the UV rays artificially and find out what will be the effect of long-term UV, subjected to UV rays when the panels are subjected, what will be the life? So, it is accelerated tests, almost all these tests are accelerated tests. Then we have electro luminance, we can find out the defects in the panels using the electro luminance test method and it's a camera having the, the, which can detect the fault in the sensor using the UV rays. Then, it is a weight leakage tester, it is again one insulation tester which can show or which can indicate the insulation level of the panel. The hotspot endurance tester, that means suppose there is a hotspot, what will happen in the long run? So, it is one type of electrical safety test of the panel. Then bypass, again diode test, it is again for the reverse current, if it is flowing out, it can withstand. So, again, it is one of the electrical safety test for the panel. After that, when they are subjected to the, in, panels are subjected in the power plant, in the environment, the, now the regular condition monitoring has become necessary because the efficiency of the power plant goes down because of some unknown reason. And then we need to find out, we cannot take out the panels and do the testing. So, testing of hundreds or thousands of the panel in the plant. So, the onsite testing, it consider the, we can have the IV characteristic done on the specific panel using a portable IV meter setup. And at the same time, we can see the hotspot in, using the infrared thermal imaging and drone type camera imaging can be used to find out the faults in the panels and those panels can be isolated. Same thing, if we can find out the, the defect using the electro luminance, those can be, could be the potential panels or the spots for the future thermal hotspots. So, those can be isolated, again, we can isolate and we can find out the cause of decreasing efficiency and again improve the efficiencies. So, those can be isolated, again, we can isolate and we can find out the cause of decreasing efficiency and again improve the efficiencies. Again, solar power plant quality, power quality measurement, power quality has again become a issue in the, because of the solar power which is connected to the grid. And the harmonics flicker DC current injections, these are the commonly used parameter or commonly considered parameter for power quality of these solar connected grid. And we can do onsite measuring and it can be done. And we can find out what are the harmonics which are harmful, flicker, what is the level of flicker. There are some standards, international standard which allow the percentage of the flicker in the grid. And there, we can find out whether there is any DC current injection and within that we can take the remedial action. Now, the next is most again useful topic for the renewable or the existing power system is the batteries. We now are talking about again not only solar plant related batteries but EV, electrical vehicle batteries. So, again, it is very important to have the quality check on the batteries. So, lead-acid batteries, we already have the facility, we have a lab which can do the life cycle test on the lead-acid battery. We can do the irate discharge tester, testing. We can do the vibration and shock which is now very important for the e-vehicle batteries also, other lithium ion. The crush test, this is in case of the accidents, environmental chamber to see the long-term effect of the environment and again short circuit in the case of electrical short circuit. And now the same thing we are now establishing for the lithium ion, it is under process. And the, very soon, we will have the similar test to, done on the lithium ion batteries. The, the type of setup required for the lithium ion are slightly different from the lead-acid batteries. So, these are now coming up. As far as battery is concerned, again, every research institute or any organization having the testing facility is now, is considering the research in the areas of battery materials particularly and battery system sales. And this is the particularly a system which is very, very useful in the analysis of the battery materials as well as the cell electrochemical impedance spectroscopy. And can do wonderful job for all type of our questions regarding the battery materials. It can do analysis of different electrolytes, separators, electrode materials, analysis of battery performance, charge discharge cycle, cyclic stability of battery and so on. So, it is a very useful equipment. Then, now the next after battery, I will discuss about the, one of the two types of the conductors which are unique and which are changing the, the grids. Transmission lines particularly, the scenario of the transmission line. And these are the high-temperature low-sack conductors, STLS conductors. And the other is the optical ground wire which are the, in fact, the ground wire, earthing wire, having the optical fiber for the transmission purpose. And we need to have some special type of facilities or equipment to evaluate the quality of this type of conductor. So, this is the particularly a setup of about fifty meter and we can see that the, there are three beds. And we can do the loading of the conductor in this for a particular type, time. It can be a static for a load, a static mechanical strength or it can be a grip for the long term. It may be forty days or more than forty-five days, minimum is forty-five days. It can be any length of time and we can subject it to the load and then find out what is the effect on the conductor. So, apart from that, the, the consideration is for the impact loading on the optical, particular optical ground wire and also STLS. Because STLS has a core which is not metallic. So, which are non-metallic cores, we can be subjected to damage because of the impact loading. And this is the impact test, actual impact test machine where the load comes on the conductor. The conductor is hanged and then this load square, red-colored loading is seen which is left from the, this, this is at the top initially. And when we release it, it gives the load on the conductor at the bottom and we can see, find out the impact resistance of the conductor. Then there are certain tests again from the core point of view because the core is again the non-metallic. So, what will happen if the conductors are crushed or under the load, compression load? So, these are the two types of setup. And particularly in the second setup, you can see a meter also because in the optical ground wire again the, it is not only the mechanical condition but it, it has to work. The inner fiber has to work for the optical transmission purpose. And so, the meter measures this optical transmission capability of the inner core last fiber. This is again one of the tests which will give the idea about the unwind when the, the conductors are taken from the drums, what will happen to the strength? And similarly, this is the bend test. We have only three sides, sir. We have some R and D facilities wherein we can do first is the simulation. We can do the simulation of any type of electrical board, this is the simulation of insulator and wherein we can find out if the corona ring is not placed properly, what will happen? So, what will be the electrical field or the stresses on the conductor? Then there is, there are two equipment which I am going to discuss. One is dielectric ground band spectroco, spectroscopy wherein we can give the, evaluate the dielectric, solid dielectric materials and liquid dielectrics for a wide range of frequency and find out the dielectric properties. This is very useful for the research purpose. Then the thermal conductivity can do the thermal conductivity because now the insulating materials electrically they are again, we want to subject, to have their thermally conducting the insulating materials, electrical insulating materials. So, that is why we have to find out what is the thermal conductivity, solid, liquid, powder, paste and from room temperature to high temperature. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much. Now, may I request anyone from the audience who would like to ask any questions? Please.
Good evening, everyone. I am Dr. Silukuri from V I T Valour. Coming to one question related to the solar panels, okay? Now, in India, we have almost more than forty gigawatts of solar installed. And many of the solar plants are actually having inverted duty transformer failures. In fact, we are doing that study, investigation. So, and one mentioned is that the standards followed to monitor power quality. It says only harmonics, DC injection and flicker, okay? So, is there any effort made to find out what are all the inverted duty transformer failures? Whether CEA or BAS or anybody is interested in investigating that? And also that standard itself, it needs revision because we are only measuring harmonics up to fiftieth. But there are harmonics due to latest technology in the inverter and what is its impact? Because if we don't do that now, tomorrow EV will come. Once the EV market enters the residential and commercial building, we will be having lot of problems. So, I think my question can be answered.
As of, as of now, due to the less density of the EV vehicles, it's not much of a challenge. But in the days to come, when there is going to be more number of EV vehicles and more solar generation, we need to definitely have filters for the harmonics at the transformer end and also at the chargers. This is, this heat is not yet faced or felt yet because it's only a generation of RE energy. Anything up to fifty percent of the generation of RE energy, fifty percent of the demand. We may not face that heat but anything above that, definitely we are going to have. We need to definitely look into how to reduce the harmonics. And also, more and more when the demand side of the vehicle charging grows, EV vehicles, definitely we have to look into some alternatives to reduce the harmonics. It's something like, those who are in, purely in technical side should answer better. I am in the managerial seat.
Yeah, the question is very valid. The, the standards which are made for these have to be reviewed with time because the complications of the system are increasing more and more. So, maybe, and the second part of the question is that transformer failure is great. So, it is not only the transformer failure, there are many failures taking place which are, which I mean not common, uncommon failure, uncommon type of failure, very premature failure. And that is why, and the reason may not be harmonic or flicker or only the injection but DC current injection, but it can be others also. So, we have to see the problem in a holistic way but definitely the re-look at the standards is required with time to time because the complexity of the system is increasing.
Any other question? Please.
Sir, it is true that solar energy cannot be produced at night or during rainy season or cloudy season. My question is that why don't we generate wind energy by using small wind turbines which are being manufactured in Bangalore itself? We should, there is no, just to, these small wind turbines are being used by IITs to educate the students. So, my idea is that why don't we use our own product which is individually being manufactured in Bangalore and no part is being imported outside India? So, so, just to promote wind energy, we can, you can persuade the government to provide subsidy, wind energy subsidy. And you can also persuade the banks to provide wind energy loans, RE loans so that people can have their own wind energy plants on their houses, farmhouses, schools, colleges and all that.
Are you referring to the micro wind energies?
So, yes, sir, small wind turbines are being manufactured. I don't have any trade business or industry in India or abroad. But, but I am interested that our own small wind turbines from hundred watt to hundred kilowatt are being manufactured in Bangalore itself. So, we want that these, this small wind turbines should be promoted by the Karnataka government especially in Turmkur district or Devanag and this Chitral Durga and all that where solar, where wind energy is at, flowing at a good speed.
What he is trying to say is that you have, you, wherever there are, for individual villages or something, you can provide small micro wind energy things so that they can sustain along with the solar.
See, every, in every wind energy, there is an issue of wind. Intensity of the wind may not be same across entire global area. Wherever it could be feasible, there only wind can be installed. And wind energy is of course very costly. You talked about extending the subsidies from the government, that we need to take it up. Blend of energy between wind and solar also may suffice in the daytime, may not in the nighttime. Wind again, as we all know, it is not a guaranteed power at all times. Wind again is a, a power which we can expect when there is a wind. So, wind, depending totally on the wind would not be okay. It could only suffice for pushing of the small quantity of the power which is lacking towards the main grid. Of course, it's also a need of the hour, governments can look into it for providing small subsidies wherever it is feasible to implement in the rural areas.
Thank you. Last question, okay? Come in.
Thank you, thank you Chairman. I am H Kumar from C S T V Innovation Centre on solar energy. My observation, I am belong to Rajasthan. Rajasthan में कुसूम योजना का development बहुत अच्छा हुआ है. कुसूम योजना है, जिसके अंदर अब किसान एक megawatt से five megawatt का penetration कर सकते हैं और उसमें subsidy मिलती है. उसे green house भी effect कम होगा, climate change का issue भी पॉल में होगा और power demand supply के वो भी problem है. मेरा इसमें यह है कि किसानों को जो awareness है, वो अगर और penetrate करेंगे, तो हम climate change की जो हमारी problem है, वो बहुत बड़ी solve हो जाएगी. दूसरा यह है कि road, so many roads है, rural areas में भी है, पूरे इंडिया के अंदर road है, लेकिन कहीं charging station यह solar energy का. क्यों एक नई scheme develop की जा, भारत के, road top solar energy system, road scheme, not rooftop, road top, road के ऊपर एक megawatt का, fifty kilowatt का, hundred car, car का, solar energy system लगा जा, energy saving होगा, government of India का पैसा भी बचेगा, infection भी हुआ, climate change भी होगा, ecosystem development को और EV charging station मन जाएंगे.
Thank you.
Kusum, you said, yes, it is very correct. Wherever we are not able to reach to the farmer, at the remotest end where there is no feeder, where I am not able to reach and give electricity in the farthermost areas, lake, forest areas, etc. Off-grid solar project for the pump sets, government of India has introduced with the subsidy of forty percent. And our state government is planning to give subsidy of thirty percent. Only thirty percent is the investment of the farmer. It's a good scheme. I don't need any grid and also I don't need to draw a line of feeder to the remotest area where I am not able to reach a farmer. And in the daytime, definitely the farmer will have a power for his pump set, irrigation pump set and also for the electricity. He can have a small UPS by which it caters to the need of his house also. And kusum, of course, there is one more component of kusum in which feeder solarization is there. So, near to the feeder where it emulates or generates, we can do the kusum project for which forty percent subsidy is there. For which nowadays, many companies are coming forward, reverse bidding is happening and they are going to do it. They are going to do it. It is going to definitely solve the problem by the year two thousand thirty as what I said. These are the two main projects of government of India by which we are going to achieve solarization and also going to contribute a bit towards the net zero.
Thank you, sir, thank you. I, I have just got one small question. When we are talking about sustainable transformation of utilities, are we also looking into the replacement of the transformer oil to the green oils or the vegetable oils? And reducing our dependency on SF six gas, coming towards a green gas?
See, there are various avenues by which we can definitely reduce the carbon footprints. Definitely, if we don't use the, the oil, what we are using the synthetic oils and if we use the natural oils, definitely there is an impact. In fact, off-laid the dry transformers are becoming much, much more powerful. And let me tell you one thing, apart from the oil, even the technical loss matters a lot because loss means it is a heat, it is a wastage. So, even if we, if given a choice whether we should spend on A or on the loss, then I will prefer to spend on the loss because that's total wastage. And the energy, the, the CO2 we have emitted And the energy, the the CO two we have emitted to produce the energy and which we have lost as a as a technical loss in the transformer is also this thing. So there are various factors and for sustainability, I think should we go to that micro level? Or sometime I get a feel that there is a general feeling that we do not have the enough renewable. So we are not sustainable. I will tell you, the problem is not the enough renewable, the problem will become when there will be too enough renewable. So the sustainability should be thought from that point of view. So many countries are suffering. Have you ever heard about California crisis in last forty years and suddenly why we have heard in last four years months? So we have to understand that. There is a wrong impression that solar नहीं है, इसलिए हम लोग वो है, solar तो आ जाएगा, पैसा लगाने वाले बहुत लोग बैठे हैं, जगह बहुत खाली है. But point here, how we will manage it? That is the most important thing. So we have to see it in totality and there are many, many ideas, there are many, many things which can be done. Definitely many, many things. Imagine in Delhi, the summer demand is eight thousand, winter is sixteen hundred. I am talking about the peak, the average, forget about it. That means if I put ten plants for summer, only two will work in winter. So what about the infrastructure which is remaining ideal? What about carbon footprint of that? You know, there are so many things. Any wastage, the wastage does not mean the wastage, the physical waste what we see. Any wastage means it will affect the environment, whether it's electricity wasted, whether it is money wasted, whether it's infrastructure wasted, everything. So when we talk, it's a very, very broader terms and we should take care into all the things. But certainly, yes, oil we can consider. SF six, lot of people are going back to this, they are there is a big this thing that we should not use SF six. In fact, I can just say because I was a jury also to select the best product. There was one small product which has been exhibited in stall number eleven. How that gentleman has replaced the use of oxygen for welding? Because during the COVID time, they didn't got the oxygen. So it was the necessity for him. He developed a welding system based on DM water, ready mineralized water. Now imagine no oxygen, no acetone, no, you know, CO two. Because when acetone will burn with oxygen, there will be CO two, no bad gases, no filler. So such innovations should be encouraged and this thing and it will be a complete ecosystem which we have to make. And rather than, these are the, you know, obvious things, solar, wind and other thing. But then it is a very, very big study and where everybody has to be engaged, including the consumer also. He has to understand his importance in the role, his behavior, his act decides how the system runs. The demand is created by the consumer, not by the ecosystem. It is the consumer who creates the demand. We have to educate him, we have to tell him. If imagine in Delhi at ten o'clock, we have power crisis and now the EVs will come. Everybody is talking, we should have more EV, more EV. Imagine if fifty percent of vehicle will become EV, people will be back from shop, people will be back from office, ten o'clock, I have shortage and they are plugging their fifty percent vehicle. Then from where the power will come? Delhi does not, Delhi does not produce any power. So can we afford green but without efficiency, without reliability? So we, this is the sustainability, we have to see the entire ecosystem and then we can.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir, thank you very much.
So now we are closing this session and now we will be inviting Dr. Nagaraja, MD P R D C to hand over mementos to our esteemed panelist. To Mr. Sudhir Agarwal. To Mr. Jayavibha Swami, MD CSC. To Mr. Rajesh Bansal, former CEO of BSS. To Mr. Regis, MD Thanks Market France. And to Mr. Uday from Ireda. A group photograph please.